Good evening, I'll call the meeting to order please. This is the board meeting of the North Rose Wilkins School District. I'm Mrs. President. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in our nation on our ground in its little, 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 little ground.
A motion please to approve tonight's agenda. John and Tina, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the agenda? Motion is carried. Mr. Poland, we will let you introduce our presentations tonight.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Collier. I'm pleased to introduce two superstars from North Rose Wilkins Elementary. We have Vinnie Bianco and Joey Barnes. They're here to play a song for us tonight. This is a very special occasion for these two gentlemen and for us as a school district, as many people in the community may recall, the Board of Education had a goal to reinstitute instrumental band at the elementary level. So we asked Mrs. Graves to pick two superstars and then she asked me to pick the song and I said, "Well, I can remember Hot Cross Buns, so maybe these two guys can play that one." So here's Joey and Vinnie, they're gonna play for us and I don't know if Mrs. Graves, do you have anything else to add?
I have nothing.
All right, guys, take it away. So gentlemen, you mind if the board members ask you a couple of questions? I know earlier they said if people wanted to save the applause and just throw money, they would take tips later on. But they prefer dollar bills because change hurts, right Joey? All right, very good.
It's quieter too. How long have you boys been playing?
Um, I know the answer to this. They were the first two students to start singing this year and it was in October.
October? Wow, that's fantastic.
I appreciate it. Would you mind next time you came, if Michael sang with you while you played? Oh, I would love that. Great job.
Two questions, are you having fun?
Yes.
Good, and you feel like you're learning things? Great, thank you.
I will add that they were the first two trombones and then when the other orders came in, they were actually able to be leaders and they helped the other group, so they were actually helping to teach the other students, which we had trombones coming in later than theirs, so they needed to play a little instrumental.
Just curious, how many instruments in the hall have you secured? I know some have been loaded, how many have come in?
So we have 54 students currently who have instruments that are ready to play. Well, this is a nice setup, since you have 88 instruments.
How many?
Fifty-four.
Please. I always think the trombone must be an extremely difficult instrument because how do you know how hard a push to get, to get the right note? It's just marvelous.
I think they use their siblings.
Well, thank you so much for coming and playing for us and we are absolutely delighted that the music program is progressing so well, the band program especially.
So now I listen to people trying to take photos, would you like to come up and take a photo with the photo room while they're playing? This won't be the last time they play, I'm sure. Needs to be recorded.
Gentlemen, thank you very much, we hope you enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you, boys. So we're gonna turn it over to Mrs. Graves and her team, they're gonna follow that talk back, but I do believe that you'll see some of the merit in the work that the staff at the elementary school have been doing. You're gonna see a little bit of different data than was presented in the fall. This is something I'll let the team expand upon, but I think that you'll see the ties to the extra work and the commitment to our children from this group as well, so thank you.
Good evening, thank you for having us here tonight. We're gonna present the winter update for you on our school improvement plan. Tonight we have Lucia Copeland, Karen Hake, Dawn McIntyre, Megan Penneck, Kristy Graves, myself.
Good evening. As we really spent some time looking forward to the second half of the 22-23 school year, S L T team really worked to identify three words that we feel that have not only summarized the work that we've done thus far, but also for the goals that we have set for the remainder of the year. Committed. We are committed to the growth of our students and allowing them the opportunity to experience a learning environment based on best practices and effective teaching. Connections. We know the importance of relationships and will continue to foster positive connections with our students and their families. And community. We understand we cannot do this on our own and we will work to build positive community within the school and extend partnerships with those around us, increasing our impact. Here are some current updates for this year's school improvement plan. To reach our partnership goal of creating a welcoming and affirming environment, we've initiated as well as brought back forms of connection with our students, families, and community. The elementary school is excited to bring back family volunteers, helping the classroom and school in various capacities. There's now a monthly district newsletter to help families connect to all that is going on throughout the district. Lastly, we've had many community members in for various events through the last few months. We brought back the Veterans Day Assembly, Rep Theater, and our Wayne County Literacy Volunteers. New to our community connections was an author visit from our very own Mr. Danny Davis, who read to a student from his newly published book. Our second goal of equity is to provide engaging and responsive learning tasks in order to meet students' individual needs and behavior goals. We continue to utilize and explore strategies and resources provided by our personalized learning coaches. Most recently, this included a technology focus on CANBA, workshops in classroom management, and ways to guide students through goal setting while being leaders in their own learning. Our new report card is giving us the opportunity to have those Tier One conversations at our grade level meetings around consistency as well as the data we use to provide information to parents. As you saw, we're very excited about our instrumental music program. Fifty-four fourth graders attend weekly lessons with a goal of beginning an elementary year. Our third goal is a social emotional goal. Classes at each grade level have been piloting the current school community program as part of their morning meeting and closing circle times each day. One piece of this program that has been especially well received with students and families is the weekly spotlight student. Each week, a student is selected to be the spotlight student in their classroom. This student is recognized in their classroom newsletter and is interviewed by their peers on Wednesday morning during our morning meeting time. This child can bring in pictures and other items that they choose to decorate the spotlight student bulletin board. It has been a great way for students to feel more connected to their classroom and for them to get to know one another. Students have also been participating in team building activities fostering social emotional wellbeing. For students, this has included bucket filling initiatives, lunchroom ice cream scoop incentives, themed spirit days, and daily circles to build community. The staff have been taking part in circles of team building activities at faculty meetings, utilizing a staff shout out board and participating in 4U Fridays, as well as referencing their wellness corner in our weekly Monday memo. Finally, we have been using data from our Panorama and Comet surveys, which students take three times per year, and we have put into place a variety of social emotional supports for students. These supports include the primary project, check-in checkout, where students are able to connect with staff members at the beginning and the end of their school day, and this helps them start and end their day on a positive note. Skill groups run by our mental health staff, our partnership with Wayne Behavioral and family counseling support for Finger Lakes, and use of the sensory rub as needed throughout the day. The fourth goal focuses on academics. We are striving to increase proficiency and rate of improvement in reading and math. Our interventionists are using AIMS Web weekly to progress monitor students they are working with through Bridges or Math Intervention and SIPS or Reading Intervention. Classroom teachers are also progress monitoring students, students who did not qualify for an intervention but may still require additional Tier One support in order to reach their end of year goals. Our MTSST needs bi-weekly to review data and make decisions surrounding the support that students are receiving. They look at attendance, discipline, crisis calls, bookroom visits, and check-in checkout data. The majority of our NRWE curriculum maps have been updated and accessed and we're ready for the next step, vertical alignment. Each grade level now has representatives for each subject area and we will be meeting vertically in the upcoming weeks using the note catcher pictured on this slide.
Goal four focuses on our academic report card data, as these two graphs are displaying our proficiency rates for ELA and math from the fall to the winter. We have some impressive growth of students who are at or above grade level expectations, represented by a score of three or more on the report card from the first marking period to the second. Our youngest UPK learners showed tremendous growth in this period with plus 27% in ELA and a plus 29% growth in math. This is a true glimpse of our day-to-day teaching of grade level standards as they relate to fluency, decoding, comprehension, vocabulary, place value, word problems, application math concepts, and understanding of the basic math functions as they relate to our four basic math functions. Teaching of these concepts are in direct alignment with our next generation standards. Additionally, students are responding to our academic interventions through the use of SIPS and Bridges Intervention Service supports. These graphs display the percentage of students who have met or are on track to meet their goals as of January. Our team progress monitors this data through AIMS Web, which allows us to see students who are making growth towards grade level efficiencies.
And finally, for our financial update, so we continue to focus on our financial goal as a way to strategically action plan around the ordering process and procedures. We will, we continue to use a purchase requisition form that really allows us to monitor the orders over the year. One important piece of this form is where teachers fill out the rationale for this purchase and this gives us the opportunity to align any purchase that we're making with district and building initiatives. We have come up with a system that allows us for consistent review of unfilled orders. Unfortunately, supply chain services have created the need to monitor our orders more regularly to make sure that items have not been discontinued or canceled, but we have worked with our office staff to effectively communicate any order updates and make sure that they have what they need. Lastly, we conduct periodic instructional material check-ins with instructional staff and coaches and this really just allows us to touch base throughout the year to make sure that teachers have exactly what they need. We also can align budgetary needs in a consistent and effective manner and then work with other budget sources, special education, community schools, grant funding, to make sure that the needs are met. And those are our updates for this time. Thank you so much for your support and let us know if you have any questions.
I have one question, maybe a couple. So with the vertical alignment, is there, are there plans to meet with middle school to also look at vertical alignment?
Yes, there definitely is. We, each of the three buildings are doing this within our buildings first and then we're looking forward to the opportunity when the K-12 piece can happen, especially that 405 and our special areas who of course have standards that span K through 12. So yes.
And second question, did you look at the correlation between the report card data and your AIMS Web data?
So we are gonna have our, like, we're gonna look at, S L T will look at all of that data in the coming weeks, so we just sent our report card home about two weeks ago, so that is one area that we are looking forward to correlating. We also know this is the first time that teachers are using this report card, so that consistency piece, those conversations are really important to us to make sure that the grading is consistent before we really analyze the data specifically. Thank you. You're welcome.
I think you may have just answered one of my three questions. So the data on the report cards, that's not AIMS Web. Okay, that was one of my questions. The second one is on the next graph where you have the percentages. We talked about the goal, are those goals that the students set, or are those our district goals?
So those goals are specifically set by teachers through AIMS Web. So any child who's progress monitored, the interventionist has to set a specific goal for that intervention time. For example, reading of CVC words or oral reading fluency. And so then we can run a report through AIMS Web to see if students, based on that progress monitoring data that's happening every week or every other week, if they're on track to meet their goal, because sometimes the goal is set for eight weeks down the way. And so that data is showing you that students are at or above, they're either, have already met their goal or they're going to meet their goal, and you can see most of them are at 80 or 90%. So that is evidence that they're responding to intervention, which is super important for us.
Okay, great. And last question. CANBA, how's it doing to me?
So CANBA is a website that you can use. We have a free educator account for all of our teachers, so you can go on and you can create presentations, worksheets, newsletters to send home, interactive whiteboard experiences for the kids. So we've done some of our personalized learning professional development on CANBA so that teachers can become familiar with it and start using it in their classrooms. There's a lot to it. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Okay, Mr. Barn, our bar's been set very high, so we're gonna turn it over to you and we're gonna continue that streak, I hope.
Got better? Okay, well, thank you very much. Tonight is really our third budget presentation, going back to November, when we first started talking about the budget, and then a month ago, your first real budget presentation. And so this really is the third presentation, the January, this will be the second, right? So we've come a long ways from November. I'm just gonna start off with these two slides that I always have in my presentations and they're the same, our goals are basically the same as they were last year, right? So we're just reminding the public, our residents, what our parameters are. I just want to mention that this presentation and our previous presentations and our future ones will all be on the website for everyone to take a look at. So we started this budget process early and we were looking at really a big shortfall. We were looking at a budget-to-budget rollover of nearly $2 million, right? So we had a big challenge facing us. We've come a long ways and I feel much better about our budget coming together now that we have our state aid runs and other known factors, so through our budget process, we've really come a long, long ways in closing that shortfall or that budget gap, okay? So these are some of the challenges, you know, we have to present a balanced budget and that really starts with our tax levy, which is, we know, has to be under a tax cap, that's a limitation for us. And then we're held pretty much at the mercy of state aid revenues. So our revenue budget really defines our increase from budget to budget on the appropriation side. So that's the first place I really have to look at, you know, what do we have to do to get our budget in balance? You have to know what your revenues are. Inflation over the last year, as we all know, we talked about it even last November, that the CPI is right around 8%, 8%. We won't know the, for another couple of weeks, what the final CPI will be for our tax calculation, but it'll be right around 8%. The last two months, it's been steady right there. So we were looking at other challenges and costs with health insurance especially, as you recall, last year, we had a huge increase in our premiums, over 22%. And that's what we were told back then, that it could be pretty similar, right? The good news is, just today, I don't have the confirmation of the number, but that rate increase from, for this year's health insurance rates to next year, the increase is not gonna be nearly that much, we're looking at the single digits. So I will be providing more specific information on that and lots of other things in the budget. We're still looking at this pretty much at a 30,000-foot level, so both, we do have some specifics we can talk about. So that was the early challenges and what have we done to tackle those challenges? We've had many, many meetings, especially over the last couple of weeks, ongoing budget meetings with our principals and our directors, and we're asking them to make some sacrifices, take a look at their budgets, their staffing levels, and we really pressed them, so Poland really did a good job there, but also supporting our building principals also. So they did a great job coming to us, we had some really, really good conversations around staffing and building budgets. So, and I wanna thank Kristy Graves who for just highlighting all the effort she's doing with her building budget, you just heard it, so she really pays close attention to that. So that's really appreciated. So we've been identifying budget reduction options and prioritizing these options, exploring various grant opportunities, that's very important. It's been a challenge in just staying ahead of what can we utilize our grants for versus what we have to accommodate for in our general operating fund. So that's on point, but I would say that Lori Elliott has done a great job, she's been here on the grants as well. So, and then we consider all the relevant resources for balancing the budget and what I mean by that is what we appropriate in fund balance to help balance our budget and what our reserves are going to be in support of our budget. So we've been talking since last year, we bring up our budget factors and tonight I'm just gonna highlight with one slide each, a state aid, the tax cap, and our major cost factors to see where we've come since the fall, okay? So highlights of the governor's proposal, it came out pretty late this year, usually it's mid-January. We didn't have any update for you at our last meeting, so we decided not to do any presentation. So the governor's aid proposal came out just last week, last Friday we received it. We're still that in that, but we do have slightly more aid than I was estimating initially, trying to be conservative, and we'll always present what we feel is a responsible conservative budget on both sides of the equation, revenues and expenditures, but so that is good news. The governor had made a commitment to fully funding foundation loan aid over the three years and next year, 23, 24, is when districts across the state will be fully funded now with foundation aid. So that proposal did include a statewide increase of 12.8%. It's interesting, in the county, the range of increase in foundation aid was just under 3% to over 18%. But ours is about in the middle, but I, what I have to tell the board, we'll get into more specifics about the state aid, because that foundation aid now comes with so straight as a patch to it. So it's not just take this money and do what you want with it. So we'll talk about that in a future budget presentation. Just want to highlight our tax levy, as you know, we're in our 11th year of a tax cap and that's, this graph just really highlights the challenge of having a tax cap, because as you recall, it's the, what we have to live with when we start calculating the tax levy, it's the lower of 2% growth in the tax levy from one year to the next, or the CPI. So if the CPI is below 2%, we have to go with that, but if it's above 2%, and look at this, over the life of this tax cap now, this is the first year where it skyrocketed, right? So that's a real challenge for us, our tax levy isn't gonna grow, we can't keep up with the rate of inflation, so that was a big challenge for us. And just a quick update on the major cost drivers that I always talk about, is the retirement rates and health insurance rates. So the good news is TRS rate is, it's currently for this year, 10.29% of salaries. Right now, I don't, we don't have the final, it should be coming out, I think, in the next couple of weeks, usually by the end of February, we have the final rate on that, but they do give us an estimate and the estimate is to go to between 9.5 and 10%. So that really translates to, could be a 2.8% drop, up to, you know, over 7% drop in the rate. So that's good news because that's a lot, that's big bucks against that rate. That rate, by the way, that's against all of our TRS salaries, all of our teachers' teacher assistant salaries, all belonging to the teacher's retirement system, all that big salary dollar amount times that rate is what we pay. So we have, we run about $10 million in, in those salaries. So, and then on the DRS rate, not as good of a factor, it's not as big as the TRS, but that rate, it looks like our composite rate is about 13%, going up to an estimated 15%. That 2% hike in the rate is actually a 15% increase. And then our health insurance rates, I just mentioned that is much better, so that's, hopefully will be below 10% in the single digits, but we're waiting to hear, they actually have had a meeting to confirm that rate today. They actually have had a meeting to confirm that rate today. And before I came over here, still hadn't had any news confirming what the final rate is going to be, the renewal for 2324. But that was great news for us. Okay, just to inform the board on what we're planning right now on the ballot. I had mentioned it, I know last year that it should rate down to proposition number four, which is kind of an extra proposition. Last year, we had to establish a new capital reserve because we were fully funded on the prior reserve, even though, you know, the reserve itself didn't have that cap in it. It's a cumulative funding thing. So you have to add that up from one year to the next, from the inception of the reserve. So the same thing is happening with our bus purchase reserve. That has, the funding's been fully exhausted. And so I'm going to recommend that we reestablish a new bus purchase reserve. And this time, we'll take the funding up to $6 million. So I will say that the cost of buses has skyrocketed. It's gone up a lot. We're going to plan on sticking to our bus replacement schedule. That's very important to us. We will get aid on those buses like we always have and that will go back into the reserve as we have done in our history. So we will have a proposition for a five-year, a new five-year bus purchase reserve. Proposition one is the budget. Proposition two is buses. We're planning right now, we've done a letter of intent for this, which we have to do. We have to give the bus managers the lead time to let them know what we're planning on doing. So we're planning on purchasing four 65-passenger buses and one smaller 30-passenger bus. And we'll have more on that as well in future presentations. Proposition three is for our local libraries. Okay? Any questions on that? Okay, and then the last slide is our timeline.
Sorry, is the reimbursement rate still around 89% on buses?
It's slightly lower than that. I think it fluctuates from year to year, but I think we're around 83. Okay, I can give you a final number. Thank you. Okay, as you know, the budget process develops and we'll get more and more specific and with the numbers and our presentations, so you got to look forward to it. All right, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Gary. So just to kind of jump into it so that we can get to the meat, potatoes and the board meeting. Those of you who read the email this weekend understand that there was some water damage that was occurred here at this building. So anybody who drove by on Saturday night would have seen our local fire department, Wolkov Fire Department here from Saturday mid-evening through Sunday morning. Giving you a few pictures right there, due to the extreme cold and a valve failure, we took on 13 inches of water in the basement. So some of the damages, what you're looking at right now, things that we have to work with our insurance carrier and some of the vendors on getting replaced. You see the drawings from the project, some of our attic stock, things that we're trying to work through. We really got very lucky that the first responders showed up when they did because we were inches away from a catastrophic failure. You know, we've been working with the switchgear, the electrical panel and the water, you know, it permeated that particular section of our basement and was right there at a critical point. So our first responders, the Wolkov Fire Department, our maintenance staff, they did an exceptional job getting the basement pumped out, getting the damage cleaned up and really working to make sure that our students could attend school Monday morning without pause. So really think that we're very fortunate. And this picture here, you can see the water, the residual water spilled at the base of the switchgear. And if you look at the salt line on that panel, the water was pretty much up to that, the lower left-hand corner of the switchgear. So you can imagine Saturday evening getting that call was quite alarming, given the cold and everything else that we endured Friday and Saturday. So we dodged the bullet. So I do want to say thank you to the Wolkov Fire Department. Do want to say thank you to our maintenance staff. The commitment that they showed here on Saturday night and this Sunday morning was phenomenal. And about 12:45 Sunday morning, we had a pipe burst at the high school as well. So thankfully, we were still on scene and we were able to remediate that really rather quickly. But I did want to give the board and the community an update on that and show you some of the damage because, again, with the fire wire and people driving up and down Washington Street, I'm sure they saw the activity here and wondered what the heck was going on. So we're, like I said to you in my message Sunday, we're working with our insurance carrier, we're working with our architects and our vendors to try and remediate some of the law and figure out what our next steps are. Any questions about Saturday? So somebody asked me if we could do like a sage burning on this building and I said, we probably could, but definitely set out the sprinkler system and that would not be good, we would incur water damage. So, yes.
Where was the pipe burst in the high school?
The pipe that burst in the high school is in our room.
Did it damage any students or?
No. Just some ugly ceiling tiles. So we got relatively lucky there. That's where we wished it more damage were going to those ceiling tiles so we could give them replays, but unfortunately, we didn't get that lucky. So on a positive note, Saturday night while we were here, our wrestlers returned from Kansas City, O'Reilly Wood, which is down in the southern tier. And last week, you heard me reference A.J. Anthony and Noah Wazinski and Leah Decker. Well, A.J. Anthony and Noah Wazinski ran the table this weekend and both were sectional champions. And A.J. was actually named most outstanding wrestler for the heavyweight division. So quite an accomplishment. A.J. was seeded number two and ended up facing the number one seed in the finals and ended up pinning him. So those two gentlemen will be representing our school district this weekend at the state qualifiers of Bissuni Brockport. So if they fare well this weekend, they'll advance to the state tournament. So quite impressive for those guys, really proud of them. And I do believe Coach DeCosmager is going to be recognized for a link of service commitment to the sport of wrestling this weekend also. And Vivian Bishop, you've heard that name before because she was a sectional champion for Alpine's team. You know, she's a young lady with an extreme talent and very brave. She won the league championship this year and she'll go on and compete for sectionals as well. So that's one of the benefits of the combined teams because, you know, we haven't had a ski team here in some time. So she competes with her friends from SOTIS and does very well. And if she holds true to what she did last year, I would envision she'll represent us at the state meet, our state competition later in the winter as well. So some very good news there. And, you know, just to piggyback on what the elementary team did tonight, Megan Palayati, our assistant superintendent, will be presenting some data to the Board of Education in two weeks. So on the 23rd, she'll do a little bit broader dive into some of the data for the three buildings and then, you know, represent some of the aims web stuff. We chose to go with a different data presentation tonight because it was requested in the fall to make sure that we're including multiple forms of assessment and multiple measures. So we did that and Megan will present a little bit more in detail in two weeks. And I believe that we have Stephen Misko from Ford County that will also present to us on the 23rd as well, given that most people will be on break that meeting. But Megan said, no, please let me present. I really look forward to it. So she'll be here to present to you. Any questions on any happenings or anything that's going on? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. We'll move on to reports and correspondence. Linda, do you have anything to report from the elementary school?
I think they did a super job of giving a great report, but I do want to mention that immediately after the break will be Fazanine, which is very well attended and students and faculty and parents are really looking forward to that.
Okay. Paul, do you have anything to report from the middle school?
Hi, dear, thank you. You remember that we had several students that were going to audition for the all-con instrumental? Well, the middle school has three that were selected. Abigail Bates, Neandra Francisco, and Hannah Manson. They're also going to have a spelling bee next week, on the 13th. Grade four through eight, so if you're going to reach in and take something, I see Kristi now, I think, right, okay. So that'll be, we'll have a spelling bee. It's going to be here, right, at the middle school. And on the 5th, they had, the middle school had, excuse me, the 6th, they had all-con together meeting. And what they were doing is, you'll remember when Ms. Rupp delivered her update that, and even one of our students talked about the number of reductions of referrals and how the school seems, the discipline, if I may use a broad term, is just improving. So they had this all-hands meeting where they continued that goal of community, you know, working with each other and keeping referral rates down. On the 20th, those students that are in the Cougar Passes had hot cocoa and whipped cream. I didn't get invited to that one. I'd like to have the layus on, get in on some of these deals. And finally, Derek Cool is going to join the middle school for a reading. And then Karen Dean from the Latin Credit Union is going to be joining the seventh graders to learn a little bit more about financial life planning.
Thank you. Tina, read for the high school.
Okay, I had with Scott earlier this week. The second quarter was completed January 27th, so the year is moving. For the 10-week period, 64% of the high school students earned merit honor honors or better. And our discipline rate has dropped drastically from best compared to last year at this time. So we're headed in the right direction in a lot of ways. On January 11th, National Honor Society hosted a blood drive where 28 pints of blood was collected, which equals saving 72 lives. So when you think of it that way, it's a big difference. There is a second drive scheduled for April. National Honor Society is also right now hosting a fundraiser to sell pedal corn where those proceeds will go to the local food pantry. And Friday night, everybody's looking forward to winter ball. Moving on, high school.
Great.
Excuse me, Cindy. Can I ask Tina a question, please?
Yeah, it's not too hard.
I just didn't hear the percentage on that and what honor was.
64% of high school students are merit honor or better.
64?
Linda and Hagner, do you have anything for Ford County?
Well, Ford County did have a workshop last week on the, yeah, anyway, not the one that's coming out. But we, some of us attended by Zoom, but it was very informative. And CNS Company from Syracuse, is there more? It's their closely located office, but they do quite a bit. And they really have promoting community schools and community school connections with businesses to help students have experiences to discover, geez, is something I'm really interested in becoming and so on. So I'm excited about the possibilities of Ford County connecting with them throughout. I think rural communities really are somewhat at a disadvantage and having resources like that can really help our students. Also, this Saturday, Legislative Committee is meeting and then several of us are going to be attending Lobby Day next Wednesday to put forward our state positions. And you all have a copy of the state positions, which have one or two little corrections to be made, but we'll be taking care of that standing and going on to our federal position papers, which you will also get a copy of. That's it?
Thank you. There's nothing on the handbook. John, do you, is there anything to report on audit committee?
No.
Thank you. Jason, buildings and grounds?
No.
And how about safety committee?
I had to miss the meeting on the 25th of the safety committee because of a weather issue, but they continue the discussion of safety measures that the district is considering to improve and make first responders more able to identify areas of concern. So they consent, they continue that and it's pretty much all I have to say.
Okay. How about the Alternative Learning Center?
The Alternative Learning Center is reviewing mid-year data and making adjustments to prepare each student for their end-of-year requirements. A lot of times, it's been spent fine-tuning the procedures for the touring center. And thus, with all the students are responding well, which means they're seeing a lot of progress.
Great. Paul, let's see.
The six new policies that are on for a first read, first of all, they're all OC rewrites. So Tina and Shelley and I didn't provide any literary expertise on those. They're, the first two are purely extensive rewrites. The last four are just, you know, like a couple of crossouts, typos, or just small, very small things. So we found them very worthwhile and we found the rewrites are well done. Superintendent agrees that they're on for the first read. If there's always a question, give me a call.
Thank you. Is there any public access to the board tonight, Tina?
No.
No?
Nope.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Motion, please, to approve the consent agenda. Paul and Jason, any discussion? I will call your attention to where's the number? Where do you live? Number eight over page four. It's, it's an honor to be able to nominate you, Linda, to be considered as a running for the OC's board. Great, it would be wonderful to have one of our people on the board. So we're happy you're interested in doing that. Anything else? Here are none? Then all people approving the consent agenda. Motion is carried. Number six, policies. Motion, please, to approve the policies listed below. Shelley and Linda, any discussion? This is a second read, isn't it? Is there any discussion then? All in favor? All right, motion is carried. Under board membership request, amendments, and discussions, I will remind you all that next Monday, we do have a workshop starting at 4:00 at the high school. So, there is an open meeting, if anyone is interested in coming. But it's a workshop, it's not a general board meeting. Any good news that, besides all that we've heard? We've heard a lot of good news, I've seen some, I've heard some, that's great. John?
I'm not so sure it's good news, but congratulations, Joe over there. He had a half-page spread in the Times of Wayne County, and he'll be leaving our elementary school and going to New York High School. Congratulations.
Thank you, John. Paul?
Yeah, lots of good news already, so I had two other pieces, though. For county all-star of bowling, we had Chance Menud, is that correct? Venkite, so another athlete, star for the Earl of Los Angeles. And then, we always get those claim letter reports, and we've been getting them for thousands of years. But I've been noticing recently that there, the number of heirs have been reduced. So, I think that's really good news. And I'm assuming Mr. Paul and our, our whole team, Lisa, Gary, and then all the folks that are involved are all pulling on the same rope. I think that was great.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Linda?
I just wanted to mention something that's not really school-related, but yet it is. The fact that Wayne County is going to be celebrating its 200th bicentennial in April. And on April 11th, which is Tuesday, there will be a celebration event at the Lyons Courthouse Building, and that will be livestream, which will be available for students to see. There will be people there, and some students will be participating musically, other, in other ways. And then there's many events going on throughout the year. I happen to be on the committee, and there's books about Wayne County history that are available called Voices of Wayne County. And if you want any further information, there's a lot of information. And a lot of hours have been spent, and people have dedicated so much time to bring out interesting facts, but things that can create a lot of pride in our county and our individual communities, which would be very enlightening for our students.
Thank you, Linda. That reminds me, that day on, on April 11th, at 11:00, all the bells in Wayne County are supposed to ring for two minutes. Does this level of hearing?
Mrs. Rupp has guaranteed she'll be up there and bring it to us.
Get it with a hammer?
Just have a law pro.
Yeah, yeah. They don't have footfalls, but, you know, that would be confusing to, as, safe, public safety, but bells will be ringing. So, we, we don't, Mrs. Rupp will be up there then whacking them out. Thank you. That concludes the items on our agenda this evening. Motion, please, to adjourn. Shelley and John? Discussion, all in favor? Motion is carried, we adjourn. Thank you for coming. Good night.